In fact, need a March 7th meeting.
Okay, all right. Let's con— you want to continue on with the agenda up until that point and then we can bring that up under L? Okay, let's go back now. We're on each one. We just had the substitute resolution. Okay, regular business. I-1 is Board of Review, Merrill appointments. I move forward. The appointment of Frank Strahl for a term on the Board of Review for a term expiring January 31st, 2012.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is Boards and Committee nominations, Merrill nominations for Planning Commission. I move that the mayor forwards the following nominated persons to serve on Boards and Committees at the— for the next regular city council meeting for action. For the Planning Commission, the reappointment of Donald Edmonds for a term expiring December 31st, 2013. Mark Maxwell for a reappointment for a term expire— expiring on 12/31/2013. And an appointment of Tom Krant for the term that expires 12/31/2013.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Mayor Potem Kerwin for the forwarding of those three names for the terms designated on the Planning Commission. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Then those will be on our next regular meeting for appointment. Oh, there's no closed session. Now, the next one, we have some people here, I think, on this item, so they're anxious for us to move forward on it. And that is application for transfer of ownership for a 2010 Class C licensed business from Cafe Sushi to JJ WMLLC and a request for a new permit food. There's A and B on this item.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I move A and B as printed.
Move by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve resolutions A and B as printed in the agenda on this item. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
I'm glad that the— that we— that you've—that we have you in attendance tonight. I think it's important to emphasize, and in our hearing we always have, that it is the norm in this community to carefully regulate what's before you. And I know that Councilmember Fleming usually has suggestions on how to be very careful in terms of looking at cards and finding ways to ensure that one does a due diligence in looking at all licenses. Because we have suffered great losses in this community when drunk drivers have been on the road. And it's something that this community will not accept or tolerate, and it's something that this council will not accept or tolerate either.
Further discussion of the motion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Welcome. Next, we have a resolution before us in opposition to Senate Bill 34. This was on council's agenda last week, and now the blanks have been filled in. And Councilwoman Beltramini?
I—I—I would—
Would you want to move this?
I would love to read and move this, so people understand. Whereas Senate Bill 34 proposes to eliminate all personal property taxes, these taxes, in the state of Michigan, and whereas Senate Bill 34 establishes no revenue offset, and whereas revenue generated from these taxes in the city of Troy— Troy— accounts for $3.8 million in fiscal year 2010-11, and whereas Troy relies on these taxes to provide essential and other services, and whereas Troy, as a Michigan home rule city, is mandated to provide essential services such as police and fire services, and whereas the statewide downturn has resulted in the loss of $719 million in Troy's taxable value in just the last two fiscal years, and whereas it is estimated the taxable value will further decline by 10.5% in fiscal year 2011-12, and whereas Troy's state shared revenue has declined $2.7 million since state of Michigan fiscal year 2001, creating a cumulative loss in state shared revenue of $15.9 million. And whereas Troy has reduced its full-time staff by 20% from 488 to 388 since fiscal year 2004-5, which includes a 10% in police department personnel and 15% in fire staff officers, and whereas budget planning for fiscal year 2011-12 is well underway and is based on estimated revenues that include these taxes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council urges the state legislature to oppose Senate Bill 34 and any other potential reduction in municipal revenue from the state which does not immediately provide for a revenue offset. Be it further resolved that this resolution be transmitted to State Senator John Papa George, Senate Finance Chair Senator Jack Brandenburg, State Representative Marty Nolenberg, the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, and the Michigan Municipal League.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Mayor Potem Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read.
I took that word.
Discussion? I think that this is an example of spelling out the details of some of the things that we talked about in our comments, both to State Representative Marty Nolenberg and to residents when they brought up things in public comment. I think it's important that if the state needs to do things to balance their budget that they remember that the local community provides the service that is closest to people, and most of it is the service that people rely on on a day-to-day basis. And if there is no revenue offset in what they're proposing to do, that they look at other types of things that they need to do, some of which may be uncomfortable for them to do, but if they wish to provide services at the state level and have a balanced budget, then they need to step forward on that. Any other comments with regard to this resolution? Thank you for bringing that forward, Councilwoman Beltramini. The other communities, I assume, are also sending resolutions?
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
You have a main?
Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just one more question.
I mean, Mayor Potem Kerwin?
For my colleague at the end of the table, I was wondering if Councilmember Beltramini was planning to speak in the legislature regarding this issue.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I was—I was asked to speak, and I was unable to, so someone else went.
Well, we appreciate your work on our behalf, and if there's another opportunity, encourage you to do so.
Counsel— Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote, then?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-6 is a request to schedule a special city council meeting to review the ICMA study, the police department element. You folks have the memo in front of you, and I think 6:00 PM on the 21st would be good. I don't know how the others feel. We need a resolution, though.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Potem Kerwin?
I'm not prepared to make—I just want to point out that it— there's a conflict that day. The 21st happens to be a day that the Michigan Municipal League has scheduled an advocacy section in Lansing for that day. I think it is important that—that we get to Lansing right away. So, that's a session that will be there. I'd prefer the 28th, just so that's not in conflict. I'm planning to go to Lansing for the advocacy.
The 28th is the date that we— March 28th is the date that we set to go to the Automation Alley at 6:00 PM? Are you suggesting that we move that, or we do the Automation Alley and then come here and do the ICMA study?
Are we meeting with one person?
Are you going to be there all day and all evening?
Won't be back.
On the 21st?
Should be back by 7:00.
It was—
7:00.
Do you know?
Probably be back by 7:00.
Do you want to do both in the same day? I think the 21st was the best date for the folks from ICMA.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
I would—
Want to do 7:00?
This—this affects budget and a whole lot of other things, so the sooner we do it, the better. And it's important to be at Lansing, but our—our first priority has to be to the city, so I believe that anyone going to Lansing could make it a point to be back here by 7:00, and we could meet on the 21st at 7:00.
Right, okay.
My—my only concern is, this will supplant the regular meeting that is scheduled, and I notice that we have called a public hearing on that night for the alternative energy personal property tax exemptions for United Solar Ovatic.
And L?
Is there a problem with postponing that till the 28th?
I don't believe so, but I'll check with Nino Licari and Pam Valenteck.
I mean, I know that most of these notices, when they go out, they say, "or as soon thereafter as possible," so my concern is, does United Solar Ovatic need something to go to MEDC or something before then?
And if they do, we—we can schedule a—the public hearings normally don't last more than five or six minutes.
Well, except—
No.
Then we better not cancel the regular meeting until after we know that. We can cancel the regular meeting next week if we have to, but let's go ahead and schedule this one at 7:00.
Well, we have one.
Okay.
Okay, so do you want to move the resolution for 7:00 PM for the 21st of March?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good.
Word.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilman Slater, that Troy City Council hereby schedules a special meeting at 7:00 PM on Monday, March 21st, in the City Council Boardroom for the purpose of presentation and discussion of the police department element of ICMA's organizational restructuring report. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Then we'll deal with—excuse me—the regular meeting schedule of the 21st after we get an answer back on whether it—it has to go forward on the 21st or if it can be moved to the 28th, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I-7 is discontinued services for the animal control services. We talked about this last week, but the resolution is before us, and A, B, and C, and it—this is the amendment for the discontinued services by us, but it should be clarified that the county is going to be providing those services. Yes, Mrs. Blom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was just looking at the agenda pack and realized that B and C were in there. That is for a—an action item for next time, but that B and C is not before you at this point in time. Perhaps we're wondering why you didn't see Chapter III amendments. So, that—that is a—
So, just A?
Just A, and that is an amendment to the agreement with Clausen, where we are providing the animal control services currently. That provides that there shall be a 90-day notification period. We are amending that to seven days so that we can proceed in getting animal—the county to handle animal control.
We're still going to do the lockup with Clausen, and they've already discontinued their—their animal services.
That's why we couldn't rescind the entire agreement, is because it's a three-part agreement, and so that's why we've provided for the seven-day notification period.
When will we get back a B and C here on Chapter III and Chapter 90?
We're hoping to have those at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the resolution, then, just for A?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Resolve that the proposed amendment to the city of Troy and city of Clausen lockup, dispatch an animal control service agreement, is hereby approved as recommended by city administration effective March 15th, 2011. A copy of this amendment shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Word.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, to approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. We already took care of I-8 as a substitute motion under H-1, so we'll go to I-9. That's an amendment of the consent judgment and preliminary site plan approval. File number SP964, proposed Walmart store expansion south of Maple, west of Crooks, 2001 West Maple Road, Section 32, currently zoned M1 Light Industrial District, consent judgment. Do we have a mover of the resolution?
Yeah.
Councilman Slater?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm busy looking here, not looking. Sorry, Brent, Mr.'s evident.
I can make a very brief presentation if you would like. However, if you want to move the resolution, it's your call.
Okay. It's the second time I've done that to you, where you were—all set the—
Mayor?
Sorry, I was looking down. Yes, Councilman Slater?
I'll move the resolution as printed—printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman—by—moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Mayor Potem Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? Do you have questions for staff? Councilwoman Beltramini?
Just a statement. I—I am not happy with a bigger big box going on Maple Road. I—I don't think big boxes are the way of the future. However, that is a place that already has one, and we do need the investment. But as a matter of policy, I don't think more of them will do us much good.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Council—Mayor Potem Kerwin?
I understand my colleague's concern, and I suppose when we look at it, we know that we're—the intention really is, is to bring everything forward. This isn't moving us forward along to that boulevard. So, I understand. We've had—we know what best practices are, we know what's incorporated, and there never the least, we understand the right of the landowners to develop lands. We work within that and encourage other things. I am pleased that there will be less parking required, and it's a—so it's a—it's a—we definitely need to be going in that direction. But I do think a better presence on that boulevard would be an asset for everyone. If not, people going by that wouldn't even turn their head and know that, "Oh, look, they have expanded," because it's simply going in the wrong direction. It'd be best forward. So, I'm—I'm glad that—that she brought it up.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I—I do have a question that I could have gotten to you earlier, but I'm just curious. In looking at the drawings of the front of the building, there is a lot of signage. Is that within ordinance standards?
Yes. Cursor review—review indicated that it is within ordinance requirements.
Thank you. It's a lot.
Okay, then, the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Our consent agenda is before us. Does anyone have any items they wish to have exempted? Seeing none, then could we have a resolution to approve all the consent items at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, which shall be—oh, I'm sorry, that's all I needed to say. Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Word.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we approve all the consent agenda items as presented with this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Being that we didn't take a break at our usual time, council has—council comments at this time?
There's a referral.
Pardon?
There's a referral on here.
I think we can do the referral quick, yes.
You want to do it quick? All right. There's a council referral on here from Mayor Potem Kerwin?
Thank you—thank you, Madam Mayor. I—I've brought for you tonight, and I left a copy for the city clerk, a copy of the PowerPoint from training that MML provided at the Core Weekender and Advanced Academy. And one of the things that was discussed, and I thought I would bring back and share with you, was that many communities are now—the leadership is looking at a biannual, a twice-a-year review of their direct reports. In our case, we have a city manager and a city attorney. And considering how quickly things are happening and how many changes are taking place, that it might be a good practice to have a review twice a year. We happen to have time at the next meeting, March 7th, because the anticipated ICMA Part II report is not—is no longer on our agenda, on our plate, and I thought that that might be a good time to schedule a performance review for the city manager and city attorney. I don't think it will—will take long. One of the things they mentioned, Mayor, that was a—a concern, and I couldn't remember if we had it, they talked about physicals, ascertain the physical well-being of your direct reports. And I think that would be something for you to look in, but it is part of—that is part of the requirements of many of the governing bodies, that their direct reports have an annual physical, so they can ascertain good health. This is a very stressful job for each.
Right. I—I don't believe that there's ever been a requirement in our contacts or even discussed. I know that certain things are under our purview and other things are not, so—
Is that something that we would want to consider?
I don't—I don't know. I don't know. We have had yearly reviews, and it usually comes in the summer, doesn't it, Mrs. Blom and Mr. Zerling? It's usually our summer date. So, I don't know council wishes to pursue this or to not pursue it. So, I'd like to hear from council members, other than—I know—Councilwoman—Mayor Potem Kerwin said she learned about it when she was at the session, and lots of times things are brought forward to us from—you've brought things before, Councilwoman Beltramini, and you have too, Councilwoman Kerwin, and I brought things that are educational for the rest of the council members. Sometimes we act on them, and sometimes we don't. Councilwoman Beltramini?
A comment. This is a relatively new wrinkle, but I do know that more and more communities are using it simply because of the position we're all in, and it takes a fairly firm hand on the rudder to make sure that everybody is all on the same page continuously. So, I—it's—it's not out of the norm, and it's not unusual, and what I have seen some communities do is the—the full-blown report, if you will, at the traditional annual review, and then a conversational review mid-year. So, I—I would have no problem doing this, particularly since we did just pass our vision and goals and budgets coming up, so I—I would have no issue with it if council wanted to pursue it.
Further discussion? Anyone else?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
Are we discussing this for the 7th?
Mm-hmm.
I asked earlier, is there a need to meet on the 7th since ICMA's been canceled? So, I ask again, do we need to meet just to do a review? I—I'm not—I'm not in favor of that. We have a lot of stuff on our plate coming up, and if—
I think we have a meeting every—only have one scheduled every—no, we don't have the 14th of March scheduled. We have 21st, 28th, April 4th. Yeah, because we have budget coming up in April.
And then we have budget coming up.
Yep.
I'd just soon wait for the—the one in the summer, and I don't want to meet on the 7th if that's the only thing we're meeting for, so—
I agree.
I wouldn't be supporting that.
When we received the information that the ICMA report would not be forthcoming on the 7th, I think some people started to make plans of other things that they were doing. Not—not everybody. Councilwoman Beltramini was going to rush back from where she had to be out of town for the meeting on the 7th, but some of the other of us said, "Oh, gee, you know, maybe there's something, you know, if we're not having a meeting there." So, I don't know what people's suggestions or plans are, or how they were going to react to this item. I did see it submitted, and it is food for thought. I haven't had a chance to read all this information either that is there. Did you give a copy to everybody?
And to the clerk.
Okay. Did you give one to Mr. Zerling and Mrs. Blom and the others? Oh, they may want to see it, too. Okay. I—I don't hear anybody bringing forth a—
Well, I'll try a resolution. I'll move a resolution and see—see where it goes. I think it—it would be good, and then again, I don't know if—remember that according to the Open Meetings Act, it could be requested in closed session. If so, it would be wise to do so before the resolution.
Yeah.
In fact, if—if there is going to be a performance review, it has to be requested by the manager and the attorney, otherwise—
It will be in closed session.
—important to be in a closed session, so we can't do it anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
As a point of information, Councilman Howard-Lack will not be available next Monday night, so—
Oh, that's right.
That may affect your scheduling.
Right.
He indicated he—he was going to be out of the country both tonight and next week, when he emailed this afternoon.
Well, I'll move a—a resolution for on March 7th. Is there a—a letter from staff regarding this?
I have no letter.
Yes, Mrs. Blom?
Mayor, this is one where, yes, it does have to be requested in order to go into closed session. However, that request could be made afterwards. I mean, you'd need to convene in a regular session anyways in order to—to go into closed sessions, so—
So, I'll move that place on the agenda, an opportunity to have a performance review of the city manager and of the city attorney on March 7th.
Do we have a second? I'm hearing no second at this time. I think— I think from that, I'm getting the impression that council members want to review the information that's provided here. No one seems to be bringing it forward at this time. Council comments at this time? Anybody have any council comments? Yes, Mr. Zerling?
I'll speak last, of course, but I'd like to say something.
Okay.
The, I just was advised from Mrs. Cindy Stewart that Nino had called, and the public hearing has to occur within 60 days of a notice. And March 14th, or yeah, March 14th is the, not 21st, I'm sorry, March 21st is the 58th day. So, thank you, Mrs. Beltramini, we have to have a public hearing. Perhaps you could schedule a public hearing, if Tony says we can, earlier than 7:00 p.m. And then try to schedule ICMA at 7:00 p.m.
Could we move it up?
Yes.
To the 14th?
If you tell me...
No, I'm talking about could we move it to March 14th instead of the 21st?
We don't have a meeting.
Tony's saying we don't have a meeting.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, I'm thinking...
Yeah. Tony says...
Yes, Mrs. Bartholomew?
I don't believe the 14th would give us adequate time to do proper notices.
Okay. Well, we don't have a meeting anyway. I misspoke. All right, 21st, what are you suggesting that we...
6:30?
6 o'clock.
Well, you wait, you were going to be, you were going to be in Lansing and get back till the 21st.
You'll have quarrels.
Oh, all right.
6:30?
6:30 is enough time. Yes, Mrs. Blom?
Mayor, I don't know what the notices actually say, but it's very possible that the notices that they have gotten call it for 7:30 p.m. on that evening. And so, again, without looking at that, I'm...
Okay.
Your Honor, I'm sure that the notice does call out 7:30 p.m. I was advised there's time tomorrow to send out a notice making it 6:30 or 6:00 p.m.
Does that meet the notification requirements?
If I may, Mayor and Council, the notices have not gone yet, so we can't alter the notices.
Okay.
So we can make that for whatever time council directs.
Why don't we do it for 6:30?
However, if I may say, if you do schedule the meeting to be at 6:30, we will have to have that included in the call.
Okay. So we need a resolution to...
Now, is there a special?
...meet at 6:30 for the regular meeting for the purposes of the public hearing? And then we'll have the special meeting following. No?
Wouldn't there be a special meeting at 7?
It can be part of the special meeting, just as long as that purpose is included in the call. You would not need two meetings.
All right.
Perfect. We'll do it at 7.
Point of clarification?
Yes. We already have a resolution, so we'll have to have a substitute. Yes, Mayor Protam Kerwin?
It's for the clerk.
Oh, yes, Mrs. Bartholomew?
What kind of meeting are we calling? Is, are we calling for a special meeting?
It really is up to council. You can call a special, or you can alter the time and call it regular.
It would best be a special meeting.
Well, we already, the point is, we already have the special meeting with resolution that was here on I-6 for 7:00 p.m. So what we would do would be to adjust that time to 6:30 and include the call for the meeting in that the public hearing's going to occur, correct?
Correct, and it will need to be a reconsideration.
Right. Reconsideration.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I move that council reconsider item, the decision made on item I-6 on tonight's agenda.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness, that we reconsider item I-6 on tonight's agenda. Discussion for reconsideration? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes for reconsideration. The mover and the second on that, yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
I would resolve that council calls a special, hereby schedules a special meeting at 6:30 p.m. on Monday, March 21, 2011 in the council boardroom for the purposes of the public hearing on the alternative energy personal property tax exemptions approved by the Michigan Next Energy Authority for United Solar Ovatic Corporation at 1100 West Maple and LG Chem Power at 1857 Technology. And the purpose, the presentation and discussion of the Police Department Element of ICMA's organizational restructuring report.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Mayor Protam Kerwin, that we schedule the special meeting at 6:30 p.m. on Monday, March 21, in the city council boardroom for the purposes designated thereof. Pardon?
And that would be an amendment?
Yes, an amendment. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the amendment?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
That is amended.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Where are we here? We were on council comments. Anybody have any? Okay, we're in the, you do? Oh, can we, because we're going to do a study session, do we have to? All right. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam Kerwin?
We were invited by Ann Kaminsky to join the Incredible Kids, which is this Thursday at the Troy Community Center around 6:30. It's so great to see these hundreds of kids who've done so many good things in their community, and I implore my colleagues to come on out and enjoy that.
Thank you. Any others?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Slater?
Do we need to cancel the meeting for the 7th?
We have to suspend the rules again.
I move we suspend the rules.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we suspend the rules. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Slater? Want to do a resolution to cancel?
Yes, I'll move that we cancel the scheduled meeting for March the 7th, 2011.
That was a special meeting anyway, right?
No, it was a regular meeting.
Regular.
Discussion? Moved by Councilwoman Slater, seconded by, who seconded?
Me.
Councilwoman Beltramini? It was a special meeting.
It was a special meeting.
Yeah, that's what I said.
From 6.
Everybody's saying no, and I'm saying, wait a minute, it was. Because we were going to meet to do the ICMA report, and there had to be a special meeting. I know the agenda said regular, but we already did vote on it, yep. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the canceling of the March 7th meeting?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any other items? Okay, we'll take a 10-minute break and go to the study session in the other room.
Um. Last time we had a study session to talk about public engagement, we worked off with getting the survey piece pretty well settled and we took care of that with a resolution tonight. And then we also talked about doing some other things. And then I think it was Councilwoman Kerwin, Mayor Pretend Kerwin indicated that there was a way we could do a calendar if we wanted to do public engagement through a dudal calendar. And I see that there's a memo that was sent to us with all that other stuff this afternoon. It talks about. It's over here. Is that the next part that you wanted to talk about? All of you? Okay.
Well, however we we set up meetings because that's important thing, whatever calendar we use, I brought a hard calendar tonight because people have hard calendars. But I think it's the desire of this council to have community conversations with folks as another in public engagement strategy. We would need to schedule those conversations with whomever is available to attend. We last time brainstormed some of the stakeholder groups. And again, the stakeholder groups came from our vision and goals when we originally listed those stakeholders. And it would be include that outrage that ICMA pointed out and that we know we have been neglectful of, so.
And we were going to set these up in such a way that folks would be in different groups, we'd be invited to come and then council members that could attend it didn't, it doesn't necessarily mean that we'd all be there. But I get the impression that we have to careful of the Open Meetings Act with the number of people there. So we have to clarify that is a meeting. Is that what you do?
Mayor, it really depends on kind of what what councils preferences are and how you want to handle this. I mean, if it is sort of desired to have one person liaison with that, or you know, maybe two, then it wouldn't necessarily be a board and committee. The problem is when you deliberate and if there's any deliberation, that's what's prohibited under the Open Meetings Act. So you cannot deliberate. You also cannot divide up and you know, in an effort to circumvent the Open Meetings Act. Right. So, so, yes, so in many cases, my advice is always be on the conservative side post it as a meeting if you think that there's going to be a number of people or if you think that any deliberation will occur.
Okay, Councilwoman Beltrane?
I, I, I never envisioned this to be a panel discussion by council, if you will. I, when we talked about this last week and when I kind of had it in my head, I thought each of us could certainly stand on our own. And if you wanted to take a friend, take a friend. And I don't even know that it's important to announce that, you know, this one is Robin Beltrane meeting with whomever and that one is Wade Fleming meeting with whomever. I think that through, and and we've used the Outlook calendar and that's free. So through the Outlook calendar, we can give available dates to staff. They've contact, contact those stakeholder groups and they send us an email and say, you said you were free at five thirty on this date. If that still works for you, your show is at this place and now go engage the public. And I think it's imperative that we also like I said, go with a consistent fact sheet. And I think we can kind of help staff prepare that. I don't think that's a problem. And we've got our vision and goals as a starting point to discuss with the public and then let them break up and and show us how we can better facilitate reaching those goals. That's in my head, what this looks like.
Okay. And I think that too, when when the invitations go out to various groups that want to come, people that want to come, that we indicate that one or two council members would be there. This is not a meeting and there won't be deliberations and 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 votes. This is simply a chance to have conversations. Right.
The only way we can get information from a lot of people who live here is if we go out there ourselves. We can't get seven of us to, I mean, we can't even meet all the time on Monday nights together. So what makes you think we're going to be able? But I do think that we need to commit to spend March in the public realm. So that this is an enhancement of whatever the statistical survey gives us back. Then we've had those listening conversations to be able to interpret our own nuances in those statistics that we get back. It's it's another tool. It would be helpful if, and I know you've talked, Mr. Zerlik, with other communities who have tried to do some online stuff. It would be helpful if simultaneously we could put that kind of a tool up there too. So because people will engage in different ways. And some will engage at the community center and some will only engage at their church or their school or somewhere else, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do think that we are, when we went home, after, after this study session, last time we went home, we had received emails already from people who watched this study session. And they were different in tone. I thought than the emails that had come all day long. They were different in tone. People were truly interested in offering thoughts, advice, reflections. And I think it would be ideal if we could go out and meet with folks and then come to our regular meeting and at a study session like this, share some of the things that we've learned. It's a listen and learn session. Sometimes I have seen participants from National Honor Society or Project Lead students who have come to events like that and as a table is meeting perhaps with one council member and a table's meeting with another, I've seen those students record the main points so that the council member or or the elected official doesn't have to do that. And here you've got someone who can go ahead and tabulate some of those things as folks talks. It's a neat, neat opportunity for service points for those kids. And it really does add a different temperature when you have a student present. So we have our youth council, that would be might, might be one source or one consideration. We know that there are some major topics that people have an interest in, whether it's roads, which we've heard a lot about, or the library, or public safety, or other services. And those could be different tables where people meet together and and share their thoughts and strategies and solutions to some of the things that we face.
And this is not a meeting where staff members would come and would not be expected to come because it's just conversations.
And there's no deliberation at all.
Right.
Because we're not delivering anything. It's a listen and learn where we do the listening and we do the learning as opposed to a show and sell. Where we're, we're selling things.
But I think having a fact sheet so that we all come with the same basic facts would be helpful. But again, I think in the the invitation, the call to do this, it'd be very important that they know the purpose of it so that they're not expecting one thing and then they get there with something else. And then we're able to have that. And we've all had conversations with some groups, whether it be a homeowners group or a church or at the grocery store or wherever we are, where people want to just talk to us. And sometimes it's a little group and sometimes it's just individual, but this is a organized effort to do it.
And if I may, Mayor.
Yes, Council.
The important thing about this is these exercises are not designed to sell council exposition. These exercises are designed to elicit ways that we could reach our goals of building a first-class city in the 21st century.
Okay. Councilwoman Slater?
I, I agree with all that and I'm happy and willing to participate in in that. But I do kind of want to make an announcement that I want to do something more for them. Okay, so I've spoken to Lori and I'm going to do an office meeting at the community center. And I've asked Maureen to partner with me so that maybe I can't be there all the time or she can't be there, but I'm going to have specific dates. And I'm going to start next week, Tuesday, and then every, every other week after that. And I encourage people come talk to me or talk to us. And I want to get feedback. I want to talk to them. I want them to know that I'm willing to sit there and and interact with them. So I'm doing that separate. I'm also willing to participate in anything else this council wants to do, but I just want to get going on interacting with with the people. So I've chosen to do that. I'm considering putting my thoughts and ideas on paper so that I can't get misrepresented or things taken out of context. And I want to publish that to to the citizens so they know where I'm coming from and what my thoughts are. And there may be a partnership in that also. But I just want to let you know I'm moving forward and I'm going to start next week. And I'm going to meet as long as people come. I'll meet if they don't come. We'll see where it goes, but I'm going to start doing that, starting next week.
Are you anticipating they'll have groups of people come or individuals?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I, I plan on publicizing it with Maureen to some degree. And we're still kicking around some of what we're going to do. But I just think it's time to get going, start talking to the people. And so that's what I'm doing. And I want you all to know that.
Mr. Zerling?
If I may, Mr. Slater, you're meeting in the community center, you said?
Correct. I have, I spoke with with them. No, it's, it's not stupid. There's somebody else, but I'm just formalizing the exact time and date, but I have spoken to them. Yes.
I recall that there's no charge for a councilperson to
Correct.
use space as part of our policy.
Correct. It's a small, it's a, it's a small room, so. Whole conference room and see how it goes.
You're going to go with evening or daytime because
Evening.
I don't know how, oh, I was going to say because Maureen has a full-time job during the day.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman McInnes?
I, I think that perhaps too, if we could talk about a little bit, if we're going to set these up where we've got one or two of us that are coming and you had mentioned invitations, so are we going to seek out specific groups of people to come, which would be different in, I think, what Councilman Slater is indicating? That it's setting aside and we're willing, this is probably a good idea for me. I don't know about anyone else, but really, I think what his rationale was, was to set aside some specific time where he could be made available and people know that that's a time that that he can be, you know, be met with at a certain location and it's consistent, which I think is a little bit different than what we're talking about here, where we're going to be reaching out to specific groups in the community, asking them to come and providing something informal, but you know, something kind of established in terms of what we're doing and the way that we're going to be interacting with them to kind of get this information and bring it back to council meetings, if that's what we decide. So I think that there is a difference between the two, especially if we're going to be seeking out input from specific groups of people throughout the community. And and who knows, if it has good reception, there may be other groups that will seek us out and want to be considered and and come and meet at a certain time and we can continue to schedule those meeting meetings as necessary as we have that response from the community. But I think that you know, whether or not specific time is set aside for a councilperson to make themselves available to the public, that this idea is unique and is something that all of us should be willing to participate in.
I have a question on the ones where it would be a group of people and they could have conversation with each other and we would be there about a timeframe. I think it's important that we say that there's a certain timeframe so that people don't think it'll just keep going on and on and on and on, you know, for hours because even though all of us, you know, enjoy meeting with people, we do have other things that, you know, and other time commitments. So what type of a timeframe was anybody thinking about with that?
It depends on the subs group you end up with. Quite honestly, if if you're talking about a large group where you may have, you know, some opening whatever, and then two or three tables of people that are going to talk to each other, then you may in fact want to mix those tables up later on, or at least do some interaction to the solutions or the suggestions that were made. And that kind of a thing, you can't do in under two hours.
Yeah, we were talking, I think one of the groups you mentioned, Reverend Trump Kerwin, was the people who had attended Citizens Academy. Because they already had some, the basic knowledge about about city government departments and stuff, but they have a chance from, then we've had, what, 10 classes or whatever. And people that want to come from there could talk to each other and just kind of just talk about stuff. I anticipate that what Councilwoman McGinnis and Councilwoman Slater are talking about, they may not have groups come, they may have individuals come.
It's a different dynamic.
Which is a different dynamic.
And, and you know, they're both, they're both valuable, but.
Sure.
The problem that I have is I get a lot of emails and I think it's a terrible way to communicate with people. And and I find myself not getting back to people because then then there's a response and then you feel like you just have to, you spend the whole day just going back and forth with emails. So I, I, I've never been a proponent of communicating using emails. I think it's a terrible way to to communicate. So I want to give an opportunity. So it is separate and but I'm offer helping on the other end too, and I'm willing to to do that also. I just think we have to just commit some time and just do it. So I'm more than willing to do the other too.
Like a seven to nine kind of thing.
Yeah.
It could be a seven.
One to three or, you know, it depends on the group.
Yeah, that's true too. If someone's available in the afternoon, but it seems like a two-hour thing. You could use the last 30 minutes kind of as a closing thing. But this is a different kind of, so that's different than what we're talking about.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Right. So how are we going to set it up? With what kind of a calendar? You mentioned a Outlook calendar and you mentioned a dudal calendar.
The manager's office has we can all go and put in our free time. When you're, the time you're willing to commit and you know, I believe that we need to commit time to get this done to
In March.
So that we get input before budget, so we get input before the survey gets back and so that we can put this to bed. We, we need to commit some time. So when are you free? Give it to the city manager's office and they will overlay that with the various groups that they contact. And if there's a homeowners association out there that says, we got a board meeting on Thursday night, whenever, can one of you come? They can either contact the city manager's office and they'll lay that in too, and we'll cover as many of them as we can. And and that too, may dictate one person as opposed to other than three.
So we should expect from the manager's office a calendar now.
It's available.
So that we can go ahead and get those days for all of us.
The instructions again.
And then the second part would be, we should probably brainstorm for the fact questions. Now, I know that there's some common ones and you should probably do that now. So those would be available to answer.
Mary, I think what what you just said about the calendar though is backwards of what I said. You said, let them get the dates from the organizations and then get from us. I think it's easier if we tell them good time, we're free.
Right.
So that when somebody calls and there's a time that we're not free, they'll say, well, I know you usually meet on Thursday night, but that Thursday night doesn't work for any of my people. Could you meet?
So for us, can we do this tomorrow then? Just send what dates you're available to the?
For March?
For March?
During the month.
To Beth Tatch. Send it to Beth Tatch.
Send it to Beth.
And just get that done. Let's just make it.
Assuming that we're going to.
Okay, yes, Mr. Zerling?
I got a question as well. Every month I meet with a group of businesses and I would love to have not just one or two of you, but all of you meet with the the people that I meet with. So is it possible for you to all select a time or should I just wait to see where most of you can meet? Because there's a handful of individuals that I'd love to have come to talk to you that are vital to the economic lifeblood of this community.
Well, for one thing, I think that that should occur after we get the ICMA report because remember they had those groups specifically said they wanted to see that and have input on that. And I think that as much as we want to meet with the business people, I think it's important for us to do this, community conversations with citizens. for us to do this, many conversations with citizens in March. I don't want to, and we've got all these other things scheduled, so I don't want to see us get overscheduled, because that's my family, I don't know how the others feel. I, because didn't you say they wanted to do it after?
We spoke about it.
Well, we're not going to get that till the 21st, so that's.
We're not going to get it till the 21st, so I thought, you know, when I heard that March is your month for engagement, and April's our month for the budget, if you will, actually, with John and me, January's our month for the budget. But I'm asking if you would please meet with the business sector.
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Well, certainly the chamber, again, these should be posted.
Is that the chamber?
Sorry. These should be posted, so that people who want to in general come, this should be on the website, so even though someone doesn't fit into a category, if someone wants to come and participate, clearly they could come and participate.
Engagement sessions, yeah.
They're engagement sessions, so they come when they can come.
But was John asking about a separate meeting?
I was asking for a subset of the community, the business community, that I have met with over the past six months.
Okay.
Can I ask, John, when was your next scheduled meeting? Did you have one on your calendar already for March?
Yes, we do. I don't, I haven't.
Because if they're set for that, whether we have the ICMA report or not, I'd be willing to come to that.
That would only be a handful, but I only meet, I meet with different businesses every month, so.
Yes.
It would be nice for me to have an invitation to everyone that I've met with thus far, to meet the city council, and have them talk about what they talked to us about, essentially. And there's not much of an agenda, but we gain a lot from it, we give update reports periodically.
Okay.
And have some very good ideas, especially, you know, we're not here, again, to sell the city, but we want to know what you like about what we're doing, and what we can do better, and we want to be the kind of community that you'll tell your friends to locate here, and if you're here, you'll stay here. That's, that's the message. But it would be very important to talk to you as well.
How do the others of you feel about meeting with?
I think there are a series of stakeholders, I think all those invitations should be included.
Right.
But that would be the conduct, all that contact list that we had talked about.
That is a different dynamic, though, because he would like as much of council there as possible, so it would have to be announced.
Right, it has to be, that's why I'm asking.
It would have to be announced and posted, and that's why we'd need a set date.
Thank you.
I would be willing to do that, it's just about finding the date, I guess.
I'll send my dates in tomorrow.
Okay, so everybody will send that in tomorrow.
I'm taking advantage of a break here in March, and
Out?
I'm out for 10 days, so.
How do you all feel about meeting with the specific group that John mentioned before the ICMA report, by the place or after? What you're feeling about?
He comes up with the date, and that's fine, but it's, you know, we had all talked about that before, this isn't new. But we should probably generate our fact questions, frequently asked questions, at this time.
A ton of them on the website.
We heard a lot tonight, didn't we? I mean, we heard similar things that we hear just about every time, you know?
It's on the website.
Can't use DDA funds, why can't you use transit funds, why can't you use, shut down the golf course, enterprise funds. I mean, those are standard things. Pension, did pension come up tonight? That's a standard.
You looked at some of the smaller communities.
I'm sorry, I have here.
As a foundation for these discussions.
I did. I was telling councilperson Val Tramini, earlier, that I had been looking, doing a little bit of research about other communities that are going down this path, and some of the things that they're putting together, in terms of a fact sheet, which is the term that they seem to use generally, to come prepared and have questions that are continually coming up. I think that in terms of providing that to council in a written document, so I can share that information, I wasn't prepared to do that with something formal tonight, because I wasn't, you know, I wasn't sure that we were going to be meeting in this meeting. But I think that combined with what we have been using in the past, and in addition, you know, the notes that have been taken from comments, council, or public comment that keep coming forward. I know myself personally, I take notes regarding all the people that come up, and the things that we keep hearing, or new things that we're hearing, so I would be more than happy to provide that, and I'm sure that the rest of council would want to have some input on it. But I think that might be more helpful, to have something to look at and review, or make changes to it, if necessary, rather than trying to sit here and gather all of those questions at this point.
Right.
That's something I'm willing to do, if.
And we may find that people who want to come and have conversations, want to talk about some things that are not questioned on Monday night.
I would hope so.
And so, therefore, when they come and they ask those kinds of things, we may want to supplement then some information, a fact sheet kind of thing, if we get some other things generated. Are you thinking in those terms too? Yeah? Okay. Okay, so where do we stand? You want to generate the fact sheets?
I think there has to be clear direction given to staff, so that this can happen.
I think, I think somebody volunteered to do that, and I think we should reach out for, she's done a lot of research, I've seen some of it, and I think she has provided some of it to John, but I'd like to reach out to Maureen.
Trying to make things easy, I mean, and I can just put together, I'm sure that a lot of the same common questions we all set up there every week, in terms of those things that we hear coming again and again, and.
An email, some of the same things.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, I think.
If somebody has a specific, maybe they could just email it to Maureen if they have something.
No, no.
It's okay with me.
Probably understand. So, I have no problem doing that, Jim.
Thanks, okay.
Well, for outcomes, we just need to know when, when we can expect to launch. Beginning next week, because we've lost the seventh, so the seventh is now available. And then, so the desire would be to have these on the, posted on the website, whenever these would be, and the invitations. I think one of the easiest lists, again, would be, because of email, and emails could go out this week to Citizens Academy, because they are available by email. Yeah. So that specific one could be an early one, and again, staff, because they're available for an evening. Right? And those are easy emails. Wards and committees.
You mentioned staff. Remember, this is if people want to come and talk with us.
Absolutely true.
I don't, well, I just want to make it very clear, that staff is not required to come to any of these things, just like people from certain groups, if they're invited, if they don't want to come, they don't have to come. You know, they may have their own things they want to.
It's very, very true.
Okay, right. Okay. I know, after you, after we get this nailed down, you said you wanted to talk about some of those other things, I just assumed that tonight, I'm not feeling too well, and I'm going to have to leave.
Okay.
But if you all want to, I mean, you can go on and carry on the rest of the study session if you want. Okay? Mr. Erle?
Before you leave, and I apologize for John and I stepping away from the table for a few moments, because we're going for essentially three weeks without a council meeting, did you want to talk about if we can budget the seven positions that ICMA required back in the fiscal year 11 and 12 budget?
Well, I can give you my answer, and then go. Yes.
Okay.
The rest of you can talk about it. I'm sorry to have to.
John, do I add anything else to that comment, or?
No, just that, you plan on giving a three, three-year budget update? Of course, now I wasn't going to do the seven, but hopefully for the 21st, I guess, is the next meeting. We have a pretty good idea, the general fund, where it sits for 2011-12 budget, it's going to require $1.9 million of fund balance, to balance the budget, that is without the library, or any of the other things that we've already, it's file option one, it's still going to require the $1.9 that we said it was going to take. The current year's budget, and looking at our revenue projections, and through the end of the year, and they do change a lot, because we have this little $3 million thing hanging over our head here, which who knows what they're going to do with the personal property tax, taking into consideration the state shared revenue, what we think is going to happen there. We've already taken into consideration, and fortunately, we already did that ahead of time, so a lot of cities didn't do it, and they're really in trouble. But looking at our revenues and expenditures, revenues, using the $2.4 million that we have re-appropriated for the current year, using all of that, revenues are going to come in about $300,000 under budget. Okay? So we're using the $2.4, we still need another $300,000, we're short $300,000 budget. On the expenditure side, we're to the good, in that area, looking at budget to act, projected budget to actual, by about $1.8 million. So, it's about a $1.5 million net amount that we would be adding into our fund balance. That's if everything holds as is, and that's after putting $2 million towards the next year's budget, or $1.9 million towards next year's budget. So that's where we're standing, that's what it looks like right now. Portion of that, or a great portion of that savings, and expenditure-wise, is the police department hasn't been replacing some of their positions, because they know that, why hire someone now if two years down the road, you're going to have to lace people off, or whatever. So that's kind of money that is there, but is not going to be spent right now. But that's where we stand, about a one and a half million dollars. So we could put those seven positions probably back into budget. We're still using $2 million just to balance, plus we'd have to, we'd be using more money to put the seven positions back in there.
Let's look at consensus on that for the seventh, the five plus two. If, Dane, where are you on that?
For which, the seventh?
No.
No, for the people. The seven people, it was five plus two was the recommendation.
It's a difficult question for me right now, not having the ICMA module, because I don't.
Part two?
Yeah, part two, because I don't know what they may say there, because maybe they're, maybe they're going to say, you can afford some bodies, or something, so, you know, I am in support of filling those positions as ICMA recommended. But having not seen the other module yet, you know, there could be some other additional tweaking that could go on, in addition to the $1.5 possibly, I don't know what they're going to say. So it's an unknown.
So right now, the five plus two makes sense to you, according to ICMA, which, with an asterisk?
Right.
Yeah, I would like to see the other ICMA report as well.
I'm for putting them back in, it was glaring, really, when they came out, with how very short we were. DPW is short, we can see it, we know it now. My recommendation is to plan for the five plus two.
To me, the service level is so bad this year, quite honestly, that I cannot imagine it deteriorating anymore, and the fact that we know that it will if we don't put those people back, to even maintain the lousy status quo. No matter what, ICMA may say that we need to do more with the police department as well, but
We know we need.
We're going to need even more police officers if the roads are so bad year-round, we have more accidents. So, yeah, put them back. It's not hard for me.
We have consensus, John, put it back.
Yeah, we'd like to wait for, I was hoping that we would have the March 7 meeting, but I can't wait till March 1st, and then try to put the typing together at that point, so.
Well, if we could, everyone, while we still have these sheets, let's look at the calendar dates, just to ensure that we, by omitting March 7.
May I, Mary?
Yes.
We have scheduled a special meeting for the 21st, to begin at 6:30, and I believe that we had expected that to last the evening.
Correct.
With only those two items, therefore, I need to ask that we suspend the rules again tonight?
Is there support for that? Councilmember?
Okay, first we have to suspend the rules, then we'll.
Okay, you have support, but are we going to have any, we have discussion on?
Suspending the rules?
Okay, all right. Oh, yes. Clerk for the vote on suspension.
Councilwoman Bill Tramini?
Yes.
Plaming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
That passes, Councilwoman Val Tramini, you're on.
I would move to cancel the regular meeting on March 21st, 2011.
We have a motion for us to cancel the March 21st regular meeting. Councilmember, would you care to discuss that?
I believe that we need to, the police department is over half of our budget, or almost half, it will be over half, therefore, if we gave the rest of the government a whole evening, we need to give the police department a whole evening to do that right. And therefore, there won't be time for anything else.
Now, we're on, we're looking at March 21st, is that correct?
Yep.
And the only other thing on there, right now, is the public hearings.
Right.
And didn't we talk about the necessity of having those public hearings?
Yes.
Six thirty.
And that's what started six thirty.
It's part of the special meeting.
That was.
Okay.
Didn't we already cancel this one? No.
No.
We had a special.
All right, now, because.